Good morning, everyone. My name is Elliot Payne. I'm the president of Minneapolis City Council. Before we convene our meeting, we have presentations of honorary resolutions. We are pleased to welcome guests to this space and to share in these presentations before taking up our agenda. First up is a resolution recognizing Farmers Market Week presented by Councilmember Cashman.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I will first read the resolution in honor of Farmers Market Week, and then we will discuss a little bit the importance of celebrating this week. Recognizing August 3rd through 9th, 2025 as Farmers Market Week in Minneapolis. Whereas Farmers Markets serve as important sources of healthy food for residents, economic development mechanisms for local farmers and food producers, and vital community gathering spaces in Minneapolis. And whereas the city of Minneapolis launched the Homegrown Minneapolis Initiative in 2008 to expand the community's ability to grow, process, distribute, eat, and compost more healthy, sustainable, and locally grown food. And whereas there are 16 farmers markets and mini-markets operating throughout the city in 2025. And whereas since 2017, all the farmers markets operating in Minneapolis are invited to participate in the Farmers Markets of Minneapolis Collaborative, staffed by Homegrown Minneapolis, to promote and gather insights about the markets in partnership with the city of Minneapolis, University of Minnesota, and many other market supporters. And whereas the Farmers Markets of Minneapolis Collaborative website at www.farmersmarketsofmpls.org has an online interactive map that makes it easy to find farmers markets all over the city. And whereas the Farmers Markets of Minneapolis Collaborative supports an important economic engine for the local and regional community, providing economic opportunities for local farmers and food producers. And whereas Farmers Markets in Minneapolis collectively supported $15 million in vendor sales in 2022, engaged more than 500 vendors in 2024, and welcomed an estimated 1.45 million annual visitors to the markets in Minneapolis in 2024. And whereas most of the markets operate healthy food access programs, including Market Bucks and Farmers Market Nutrition Program. And whereas 47% of the Farmers Market patrons in 2024 walked, biked, or took public transit to the market, further contributing to its positive environmental impact. And whereas August 3rd through 9th, 2025 is the 26th National Farmers Market Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby recognize August 3rd through 9th, 2025 as Farmers Market Week in the city of Minneapolis. Yay! So really happy to be celebrating this week as someone who worked as a Farmers Market vendor about 10, 12 years ago on the Nicola Mall Farmers Market, which we do not have at the moment, but may consider bringing back at a later time. It's a really great opportunity just to meet so many people in the city, to be connected to our food in the city, and to provide a reason for us to be out, you know, together in our streets. So thank you to everyone who sells at Farmers Markets, who organizes Farmers Markets, who shops at Farmers Markets, and I hope we can continue to grow our market ecosystem in Minneapolis. And we have some guests here from Homegrown, as well as Ella from the Mill City Farmers Market. Do you want to say a few words?
Sure. Thanks to the council for this resolution. It's super fun to have something into Homegrown, Allison and Grace especially. Like, it's really great to have something for us to rally around. So one of the ways that we're using this this weekend, we'll be open on Saturday from 8 until 1:00. We have over 115 rotating vendors, many of them farms, but this weekend they'll probably be close to 70. And there's a partnership that we're doing with Metro Transit. So it's a really lovely way to bring more people to the market and also a bike benefits program. So just trying to get more people out recognizing how much great local food there is that farmers and food makers are bringing into our community, especially at this time, like as the federal landscape is changing. I think these hubs that we have and are really strong in Minnesota and Minneapolis in particular are going to be really important for those people.
Absolutely. Sure.
I just want to say thank you. Farmers Markets don't just happen. So thank you to all of the farmers and to the market managers who work really, really hard behind the scenes to make it a positive experience for not only their vendors, but all of the community members who turn out for Farmers Markets. It's a really great economic driver, but it's also a really important cultural asset in the city, and we're very grateful to all of our Farmers Markets and their managers.
All right. And lastly, just to plug the newest Farmers Market in the city, which is the Uptown Farmers Market, happening on Thursdays from 4 to 8, which just relaunched again this year, and it's been a total transformation for the Uptown community to have a place to gather on a weekly basis. So thank you to everyone who's contributed to that as well. All right, should we pose for a picture together?
Next up, we will welcome up our civil rights director, Michelle Phillips, and I will be Keep it coming. Welcome, everyone. We have the crew showing up. We really wanted to take the time to commemorate Director Phillips' time at the city. So whereas Michelle Phillips, a lifelong civil servant and accountability practitioner, joined the city of Minneapolis as the Director of Civil Rights Department on July 15th, 2024. And whereas Michelle Phillips' last day with the city is August 11th, 2025. And whereas during her tenure, Michelle Phillips' leadership strengthened the Civil Rights Department, and she accomplished monumental milestones, including a strategic hiring and training plan focused on professional development and staff retention, increasing the department's staffing levels from 65% to 93%. Significant progress on the Office of Police Comic Reviews Reform Responsibilities, and nearing elimination of the complaint backlog. Passage of a stronger, more inclusive civil rights ordinance that went into effect August 1st, 2025. A groundbreaking wage theft conviction in partnership with Hennepin County's Attorney's Increased cohesion and collaborate within the Civil Rights Department across its divisions, as well as with the larger city enterprise. And...
Whereas Michelle Phillips leaves the city of Minneapolis for a new leadership opportunity with the city of Oakland as an Assistant City Administrator. And whereas Michelle Phillips leaves a lasting legacy in the Civil Rights Department, the city enterprise, and the Minneapolis community. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby honor Director Michelle Phillips for her leadership, commitment, and service to the city of Minneapolis and its Civil Rights Department. Thank you for your service.
So you already have the mic and you're ready to talk, but I just wanted to say, I was actually in Oakland for a conference right around the time that you'd accepted the job, and it was just really, really just grounding to hear about the history of police reform in Oakland and how we are just at the beginning of this process and how deep Oakland is in it. And to hear about the impact that you made in Oakland got me so excited about the role that you were going to have here in Minneapolis. And just in this one year, you've completely transformed what police oversight looks like in the city of Minneapolis, and I'm just really grateful for your leadership and being here. And it's just been such a breath of fresh air to have a partner in you and addressing some of these challenges. So just thank you.
So I want to say to you, Director Phillips, that I recently shared the moment that we knew that you were the one, and it was the mayor who was like, Margaret, go get her. And I'm so glad we did. I just, it's even beyond what you've been able to do in a year. You were able to bring back amazing staff to the department who had left us and attracted them back. You have been able to build this staff up, and I think all-time, like, high ratings of how people are feeling as employees of the department. And that's what makes you so well-suited to be able to go on and get ready to launch into what I believe is going to be an amazing trajectory, that we will see you as a city operations officer or a city administrator very soon. And I know this is you becoming the assistant. It's a dream of yours, and this is the definition of bittersweet in the world. It is bitter for us to lose you so soon into your tenure here. We know you would have done even more great things, but also how sweet that we get to claim a little bit of you as you keep rising. And so, thank you.
So it's, excuse me. So it's really bittersweet for me to see you leave, but I will say that you have made more of an impact in a year than I think literally any other individual could have. And I am so proud of all of the wonderful things that you have been able to accomplish, which have all been challenging but important. And you have done them at the same time as you made all of us and all of the work that we do across the Civil Rights Department feel important and valuable, and that we were important as whole people too, and not just as city employees. And the cohesion that you have brought to the department, the mentorship that you have brought across the department to me and to other leadership and staff in our department did not go unnoticed and really made a strong impact in how we are going to be able to move forward even after you leave. You will have a legacy that will live on in the Civil Rights Department for years and years to come, I am sure. And I'm very grateful for all your work and your mentorship and everything that you have meant to all of us. So thank you.
Guess that's it. It's a lot of folks up here. I want to thank everyone, Council President Payne, COO Anderson Kelleher, Council Vice President Chugtai, Choudry. I mean, I couldn't thank the entire council enough. Mayor Frye and him just believing and seeing something in me and value. And then for the council to just wrap their arms around me as well, to support the vision. It was a blind one. And you can only be a strong leader when people are willing to follow. So huge, huge thank you to my staff. So incredibly proud of what you guys have been able to do. The Minneapolis community, the entire enterprise, Commissioner Barnett, you know, it's nothing but love. What we've been able to do with the settlement agreement work, our city attorney. We have our times, but we continue to move the work forward, and it's for the right reasons. We need to have very strong, strong protections in civil rights. We need to have a very long-lasting, sustainable accountability infrastructure as we continue to move forward with the settlement agreement provisions and strengthening what that looks like here without me. So I am leaving well-capable practitioners of this work to continue it on, and nothing but a phone call away. So thank you all, family, for everything you've done and everything you've poured into me to make this tenure successful.
Real close, real close, real close.
Independence Day.
It's an honor to have the ambassador here, as well as the entire staff of the Ecuadorian Consulate, which I am very proud to host in Ward 1 on Central Avenue. And we have been working with the consulate all year to make sure that the city and the consulate are really well-connected and supporting each other. The consulate does weekly resource fairs for our Ecuadorian community, and I personally joined those resource fairs once a month, and it's been really great building that connective tissue between both of our governments. And so I'm really proud to be here today to honor and recognize Ecuadorian Independence Day. Whereas throughout the late 18th and 19th centuries, several countries across Latin America, including Ecuador, began movements for independence from colonial rule, marking a powerful chapter in the region's history. And whereas the Ecuadorian community in Minnesota honors August 10th as the Dia del Primer Grito de Independencia, or Day of the First Cry of Independence, commemorating the 216th anniversary of Quito's Declaration of Independence from Spanish colonial rule and the beginning of Ecuador's struggle for full sovereignty. And whereas the Republic of Ecuador attained full independence in 1822, following the Battle of Pichinca, securing its place as a free and sovereign nation and inspiring further liberation movements across the continent. And whereas an estimated 16,991 Ecuadorians reside in Minnesota, with many calling northeast Minneapolis home, as marked by the presidents of the consulate of Ecuador on Central Avenue. And whereas the celebration of Ecuadorian Independence Day offers a meaningful opportunity to further our city's relationship with the Ecuadorian community, whose roles in entrepreneurship, activism, and culture enrich the social-economic vitality of our city.
And whereas activists from the Ecuadorian community contributed significantly to the passage of an ordinance supporting sidewalk food cart vendors through engagement with elected officials and city departments, paving the way for immigrant micro entrepreneurs in our city. And whereas the Ecuadorian community in Minnesota exemplifies passion, diligence, and strong cultural community values, representing important contributions to our city, state through business, education, arts, and public service.
Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby recognize August 10th, 2025, as the 216th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence of Quito, Ecuador, marking the beginning of Ecuador's independence from Spain, and celebrate the rich cultural diversity and contributions of the Ecuadorian community. Thank you. Madam Ambassador, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much, once again, President, Councilor Payne, not just for this ceremony, which honors the independence, the first cry of independence of my country. In fact, that in August 1809, a group of leaders decided to cut off the ties with Spain. And during a year they were in power, they were overwhelmed the following year, and they were almost exterminated. Nevertheless, the passion for freedom stayed, and after 10 years more or less, the struggle ended with a complete freedom for Ecuador on the Battle of Batalla del Pichincha on the 24th of May, 1822. So I'm very grateful that the consul of Minneapolis is honoring my country on this occasion. And also, I'm very grateful because we have a strengthened relationship during this month. The consul of Minneapolis is working with us in order to benefit the Ecuadorian community, which is a community, I would say, characterized by their resilience, perseverance, and love of freedom, and also for the love they feel always for our country, no matter the years or no matter the distance. And on this morning, I was saying that we always feel, you know that, where you are abroad, you have this longing for the flavors of your country, the flavors of nostalgia. And happily, thanks to the Consular Chavez, we don't feel the longing anymore, because we can find everything, everything related to Ecuadorian food, which I recommend you to try, thanks to this ordinance. And also, I'm very grateful because the council is not just regulating, they are training people in order to comply with the law and to set standards, higher standards, of compliance in Minneapolis. And furthermore, I would like to thank, because this community is the second-largest in the city and always has been welcome and always is a part of the community and the city. Thank you once again for this extension that I feel deeply in my heart. Thank you, President Payne.
Yeah, and I also want to thank our Director of the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, Director Michelle Rivera. She's been joining us at these resource fairs, making sure that the community knows that the city is standing behind them and has resources available. As the ambassador said, really want to thank Councilmember Chavez, Councilmember Chaudry for the work that we've done to support, and city staff, for the work that we've done to support our food vendors, to make sure that they can be welcome in our city and make sure that they're operating in a healthy way. We want to make sure that we are not just saying with our words we're welcoming city, but we are through our actions, whether that's legislation or where we show up, that we stand with our immigrant community. So I really just, I'm grateful for everyone joining us here. Thank you, Brandon Garcia, from my office, Yvonne Hernandez, Liam Davis Temple, Ikram Mohammed, because this has all helped along through a lot of collaboration across a number of offices. So thank you all for being here. Let's, yeah, thank you. Take a photo? Let's all kind of squeeze in between these two black lines right here.
the Trans Equity Summit.
We've had multiple resolutions this morning honoring some really amazing opportunities. Farmers Market, Ecuadorian Independence Day, our director, Michelle Phillips, and now we are recognizing the Transgender Equity Summit, which I have been... Is it working? Can you guys hear me? Just closer? So this resolution is recognizing the Transgender Equity Summit, which has been going on for 10 years now. It's really an incredible event that recognizes and uplifts and supports the trans community in Minneapolis and throughout the metropolitan area and the state, I would say. Yeah, and so recognizing August 11th, 2025, as the 10th Annual Transgender Equity Summit. And so I'll just read it. Whereas, Minneapolis was the first city in the United States to ban discrimination based on transgender identity when it amended its civil rights ordinance in 1975 by adding language banning discrimination based on having or projecting a self-image not associated not associated with one's biological maleness or one's biological femaleness. And whereas, there is still much work to be done, the city of Minneapolis continues to make efforts to reduce the significant disparities in employment, healthcare, safety, housing, and access to public spaces largely through the Transgender Issues Work Group, created in two thousand and fourteen, and the Transgender Equity Council, created in two thousand and seventeen. And whereas the establishment of the Transgender Equity Council in two thousand and seventeen, a voluntary body comprised mostly of Minneapolis residents, further enhanced community engagement and participation in the advancement of policies and procedures of the city of Minneapolis that impact the lives of transgender individuals. And whereas both the city of Minneapolis and the state of Minnesota have signed executive orders to protect and support the rights of Minnesota's LGBTQIA-plus community members to safely seek and receive gender-affirming healthcare services. And, and I'm gonna share the mic with Consul Member Chavez.
And this is a good part. Whereas, in two thousand and fourteen, it's believed that the city of Minneapolis was first in the nation to host a city-sponsored transgender equity summit, which has become an annual event drawing increased participation each year upwards of three hundred attendees. The summit was started by then-city council policy aide Andrea Jenkins, who would then go on to become the nation's first openly transgender president of the city council in two thousand and twenty-two. I think we got to give that a big round of applause. In its previous terms, the city of Minneapolis made history as the first city in the United States to have two black openly transgender council members elected to its body, and I think we have to honor that. Whereas, the annual transgender equity summit is sustained by the great efforts of various city departments, community-based organizations, cross-governmental partners, and residents rooted in LGBTQIA-plus communities of Minneapolis. And whereas, each year, we celebrate both local and national champions, advocates, organizations, workers, entertainers, and residents deeply concerned about the advancement of transgender equity in our city and country. For the Tenth Annual Trans Equity Summit, we welcome a pioneer in advancing the rights of transgender and gender nonconforming people, Ms. Major, an activist, and veteran of the Stonewall riots of the LGBTQ plus liberation, who also founded the Transgender Intersex Justice Project in San Francisco to help incarcerated and formerly incarcerated individuals reenter into society.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby honor and recognize the Tenth Annual Transgender Equity Summit on August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, as a day dedicated to celebrating the accomplishments and the victories of transgender and gender nonconforming people while raising awareness, education, and collaboration around the work that is still needed to save trans lives. So I know we want to hear from some of our community members and city staff, but I just want to take this moment to just really thank all of the city staff that have been involved and our community members in making this event happen for the past ten years, and particularly this year, as we move into, or as I move into retirement, I guess I would say, it's really just been an honor to be in a city that recognizes its transgender nonconforming communities in such positive and official ways. I am just overwhelmed with emotion that this is, this is my reality, that I live in a city that uplifts and affirms trans lives, and that's really a big deal. So first, I think I want to hand the microphone to Shor. Shor is to talk a little bit about the summit that's coming up, and I think we have some record numbers of registrations this year. So Shor, you want to talk a little bit about the summit?
Thank you, Consul Member, and what an honor to have you pass the mic over here. Hi, everybody. Yes, we have record numbers of folks attending the Tenth Annual Trans Equity Summit. We will be having over four hundred and twenty-five folks joining us on Monday. We are so thrilled. And as Consul Member has already stated, we are welcoming Ms. Major as our keynote speaker. We are welcoming some renowned national speakers in our afternoon panel, which Consul Member will be moderating. And we are just thrilled to be in community and to love on each other and to support each other so fully on this day, and we can't wait to be there. Thanks, Consul Member.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rox with the organization called Our Space, and it's been a great honor and pleasure to work with Consul Member Jenkins, the full body of the council, both Mayor Hodges and Mayor Fry, to ensure that we have this day where we can actually celebrate and rejoice in the contributions and the lives of trans Minnesotans and trans folks everywhere. And I'm super excited for this year's conference. We have some really amazing folks speaking and some good things happening in our community, and I'm looking forward to celebrating with all y'all this Monday.
This is Know Me Bad Boy, and as a community leader and Minneapolis, Minnesota native, I am incredibly honored and grateful to be in this space with you all and to have such a monumental, you know, recognition in a day for trans people. I identify as transgender, and I'm just grateful to see this. Thank you all so much.
I'll just wrap up. My name is Karen Mo, and I do want to acknowledge we would be remiss if we did not at least give you your flowers while you are still here on council. Because there's a lot of people who have come before us who have been instrumental in making the Trans Equity Summit a beautiful event, but I think none kind of carry the amount of responsibility and influence that you have had, Consul Member, on this event and on assuring that our city really does, is a safe and beautiful and welcoming space for all of our trans community members. So thank you so much.
Finally, we have our Black POC LGBTQ plus resolution presented by Consul Member Jenkins and Chavez once again, and we will welcome guests.
All right, here we go again. Resolution honoring Black and People of Color LGBTQ, and I'm just going to add IA plus, is that okay? Pride Weekend two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas, the first public display of pride was formed by Black and Latinx trans women of color out of protests of police brutality and discrimination. And whereas, this year, two thousand and twenty-five March marks the fifty-third year of the Pride Parade and Festival in the Twin Cities, with the first Pride March in nineteen seventy-two marking the anniversary of New York Stonewall uprising. And whereas, the Twin Cities Pride Festival historically lacked the inclusion of Black LGBTQ plus people. Black Pride in nineteen ninety-nine was formed to make sure all cultures were included. Furthermore, the erasure of Black, Latinx, and Indigenous transgender women in particular led to an important movement known as the Power to the People stage in Loring Park as a response to discrimination. And?
Whereas, Black Pride, as well as the Power to the People stage, became beacons in the park, with the movement expanding into the People of Color LGBTQ plus Pride Organization, a nonprofit organization celebrating, supporting, and uniting LGBTQ plus people of color with a focus on equity, assurance, racial justice, and economic opportunity for community members. The stage has brought talented artists such as Chastity Round, Lizzo, Frenchie, and many more gifted local artists and activists. And since two thousand and fourteen, the People of Color and LGBTQ plus Pride Organization has connected and served LGBTQ plus people of color statewide through HIV health advocacy, furthering civic engagement work, and the constant fight for equity and equality for LGBTQ plus people of color, and producing the annual Twin Cities Black Pride Festival. And whereas, the organization works diligently to address issues of race, culture, class, political and sexual health, in order to successfully achieve positive change in education, employment, social, emotional learning, and the overall quality of life for our community members. And?
And whereas, POC Pride is both and. It is advocacy and direct action towards greater equity and racial justice for Black, Indigenous, Latinx, and LGBTQIA-plus people of color, and a celebration of culture, dance, performance, glitter, and ingenuity. Now, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby recognize the Minnesota People of Color Pride Organization and their outstanding leaders for their continued advocacy for racial justice for LGBTQ plus communities across the state, marking the eleventh anniversary of Min-Poc, Minnesota POC, LGBTQ plus Pride Organization, and the twenty-sixth anniversary of the Twin Cities Black Pride Celebration, taking place from August thirteenth through the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. This annual event, themed Better Together, serves as a platform to showcase and celebrate the vibrant ethnic communities in Minnesota, particularly the African-American community. Thank you. Dennis, would you like to say a few words?
So I just want to highlight the twenty-six years, because I want to give someone their flowers today. I don't have physical flowers, but I want to give them the aculations. So that's Dennis Anderson right here. We started this thing back in nineteen ninety-nine, me, him, and Roxanne. Set in a small office, decided to get this thing together. Roxanne went off on her way, I went off on mine. We recently just came back, but Dennis kept this thing going consistently for twenty-six years, so he deserves his flowers, consistently, never stopped. And that's why we're here today, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, she started this in ninety-nine, too, so I supported ever since. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Tyree has been around for those twenty-six years as well.
Can you just tell where the events will?
Yes, so our events start in seven days, from the thirteenth through the seventeenth. We're going to have a big celebration, Pride in the Park, at Powderhorn Park on the seventeenth. We welcome you all. We've grown our vendors over the years. This year, we have sixty-eight vendors, we have four food trucks, we have a lot of entertainment, so please come out and enjoy. And you can go to MNPOCPride.org if you want to check out all of our events. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. At this time, I'm going to call this regular meeting of the city council for August seventh to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Consul Member Cashman.
Present.
Consul Member Osman.
Present.
Consul Member Rainville.
Present.
Consul Member Cashman Chavez.
Present.
Consul Member Vitah.
Present.
Consul Member Allison.
Here.
Consul Member Koski.
Present.
Consul Member Wonsley.
Present.
Consul Member Jenkins.
Present.
Consul Member Palmasano.
Present.
Consul Member Chowdhury.
Present.
Vice President Shugtai.
Present.
President Payne.
Present.
There are thirteen members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Before we begin the meeting, I want to offer a friendly reminder to all members and staff that this meeting is broadcast live to enable greater public participation. The broadcast includes real-time captioning as a further method to increase the accessibility of our proceedings to the community. Therefore, all speakers need to be mindful of the rate of their speech so that our captioners can fully capture and transcribe all comments for the broadcast. We ask all speakers to moderate the speed and clarity of their comments. With that, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Before I ask for a motion to adopt the agenda, I will note that we have four additional notices of ordinance introduction in front of us. One from me, related to ethics revisions, two from Consul Member Chavez, related to the demolition and wrecking of structures, and one from Consul Members Osman and Wonsley, related to rental dwelling licenses. Are there any additional amendments to the agenda? May have a motion to adopt the agenda, including the additions.
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Consul Member Cashman.
Aye.
Consul Member Osman.
Aye.
Consul Member Rainville.
Aye.
Consul Member Chavez.
Aye.
Consul Member Vitah.
Aye.
Consul Member Allison.
Aye.
Consul Member Koski. Consul Member Wonsley.
Aye.
Consul Member Jenkins.
Aye.
Consul Member Palmasano.
Aye.
Consul Member Chowdhury.
Aye.
Consul Member Koski.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries, and the agenda is adopted. The next item is acceptance of minutes from our regular meeting of July twenty-fourth. I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Consul Member Cashman.
Aye.
Consul Member Osman.
Aye.
Consul Member Rainville.
Aye.
Consul Member Chavez.
Aye.
Consul Member Vitah.
Aye.
Consul Member Allison.
Aye.
Consul Member Koski.
Aye.
Consul Member Wonsley.
Aye.
Consul Member Jenkins.
Aye.
Consul Member Palmasano.
Aye.
Consul Member Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries, and those matters have been referred. The next order of business is presentations from our standing committees. Those are taken in alphabetical order, beginning with the report of our Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee, which will be presented by its chair, Consul Member Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. The Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee is bringing forward fifteen items. The first is a gift acceptance from the mayor's innovation project for travel, lodging, conference registration, and meal expenses for Amanda Harrington to a
That carries and those matters have been referred. The next order of business is presentations from our standing committees. Those are taken in alphabetical order, beginning with the report of our Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee, which will be presented by its chair, Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. The Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee is bringing forward 15 items. The first is a gift acceptance from the Mayor's Innovation Project for travel, lodging, conference registration, and meal expenses for Amanda Harrington to attend the Mayor's Innovation Project Summer 2025 Meeting in Albuquerque, New Mexico, from July 30th through August 1st, 2025. Second is a gift acceptance from the Big Cities Health Coalition of Registration, Lodging, Transportation, and Meals and Incendials for Heidi Ritchie to attend the BCHC hosted visit to the Centers for Disease Control in Atlanta, Georgia, from December 8th through 10th, 2025. Three is a gift acceptance from Illinois Environmental Health Association of Transportation and Lodging for Adam Calahar to attend the IEHA Annual Education Conference in Oglesby, Illinois, from November 5th through 6th, 2025. Four is a gift acceptance from the National Association of County Health Officials of Registration, Hotel, Airfare, Meal, and Transportation for Demone Chaplin to present at the National Association of Local Boards of Health Annual Conference in Savannah, Georgia, from October 5th through 8th, 2025. Five is a contract with BRI Parent Inc., Benefit Resource LLC for Cobra Administration Services. Six is a contract with the Regents of the University of Minnesota for bench scale ozone testing research. Seven is a contract with Hagan, Christensen, and Mecklen Architects for architectural and engineering design services. Eight is a contract amendment with UKG Chrono Systems LLC for providing timekeeping and scheduling service software. Nine is contracts amendments with Emerge Communities LLC and American Indian OIC for workforce development services. Ten is a license agreement with Metropolitan Council for the Metro Pass Program. Eleven is a bid for West 44th Signal and ADA improvements for Thomason Sons Construction, Inc. Twelve is a contract amendment with multiple agencies for the 2025 Community Outreach and Safety Program. Thirteen is contracts with Restoration, Inc. for 2025 Minneapolis Strategic Outreach Initiative Services. Fourteen is contracts with various vendors for the 2025 through 2028 Violence Prevention Services for Neighborhood Safety Department, and the amount to not exceed $3.1 million in total. And fifteen is a contract amendment with Canopy Roots LLC for Behavior Crisis Response Program Services. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Councilmember Wonsley has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne, and thank you Chair Wonsley. I thought that I would be remiss to not express how excited I am that we're extending our contract with Canopy Roots for the Behavioral Crisis Response, and that it's now housed in the Fire Department after budget last year. The BCR program is a truly innovative approach to expanding public safety, and it's been very successful. Downtown actually receives the largest amount of behavioral crisis response calls, and so I'm especially grateful to Canopy Roots and their trained mental health professionals for the truly empathetic and compassionate approach that they take to helping community members who are in distress. So I'm really proud to be part of a city that's taking this innovative approach, that we have a 911 mental health response, and I'm happy to see us moving forward, expanding this program, and continuing it for years to come.
Couldn't have said it better myself. Seeing no one left in queue, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the report.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville is absent. Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye on everything except number 13.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes in the report except for number 13, which has 11 ayes and one nay.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, we'll have the report from our Business, Housing, and Zoning Committee, given by that committee's chair, Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, President Payne. The Business, Housing, and Zoning Committee is bringing 12 items. Item one is approving a liquor license for Lucky Shots Pickleball Club. Item two is approving a liquor and 2:00 AM license for Ladona. Item three is granting an appeal to Port of Minneapolis for the properties at 3601 and 3701 Washington Avenue North. Item four is approving four liquor licenses. Item five is approving 26 liquor license renewals. Item six is approving one gambling license. Item seven is approving rezoning application from 1600 and West Lake Street LLC to rezone the properties located there. Item eight is approving a rezoning application from West Ham Sunball to rezone the properties at 2900 Clinton Avenue. Item nine is authorizing an ownership and opportunity fund to Blimith Academy. Item 10 is authorizing consent to lease assignment to Life Source Donation Services. Item 11 is authorizing a temporary construction easement for 1005 West Broadway to be conjunction with demolition at 1001 West Broadway. And lastly, item 12 is accepting and authorizing a grant from U.S. Housing Department. With that, I'll approve all items, thank you.
Councilmember Osman has moved approval of the committee's report. And before I call on any discussion, Councilmember Rainville, would you like your vote recorded for the AO report?
Yes, thank you very much, I had to take that call, it's an emergency.
That's all right. And the affirmative for all items?
Yes, please.
Mr. Clerk, without objection, if we could get that recorded. All right, and checking the queue, I see no one for the biz report. With that, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the full biz report.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley is absent. Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye on all, no on three.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes in the report except for number three, with 11 ayes and one nay.
That carries and the report is adopted. The next report is from our Climate and Infrastructure Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. Climate and Infrastructure Committee has six items today. Item one is authorizing acquisition of easements from Little Earth Residents Association. Item two is authorizing an agreement with the BNSF Railway for the 27th Avenue Northeast Railroad Crossing Improvement Project. Item three is approving a block event permit for the downtown Minneapolis Street Art Festival. Item four is authorizing a memorandum of understanding with BNSF Railway to store emergency response equipment on city property. Item five is adopting a report designating the 2026 Citywide Streetlight Operations Fee Assessment and setting a public hearing for September 20th, sorry, September 30th for those assessments. Item six is adopting a report designating the 2026 Citywide Street Maintenance Assessment and setting a public hearing for September 30th for those assessments as well. And I'll move approval of all six items.
Councilmember Cashman has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Finally, we have the Public Health and Safety Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Health and Safety Committee is bringing forward four items. Item number one, is the passage of an ordinance related to earned sick and safe time updates. This came out of the committee without recommendation. Item number two is authorizing a grant acceptance from the Minnesota Department of Health for a public health response sustainability grant to support local response to emergencies. Item number three is approving an appointment to the Public Health Advisory Committee. And item number four is authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Augsburg University and the Aurora Center for a DOJ grant-funded project for prevention and intervention of sexual assault, domestic violence, stalking, and human trafficking. I'll move approval of items two through four, and I'll pull aside item number one for potential motion, and I'll just ask Councilmember Palmasano to speak to that item.
Councilmember Chavez has moved approval of items two through four. We will hold on item number one. Before we take up discussion on those items, the clerks wanted me to check in. Councilmember Wonsley, did you want your vote recorded for biz?
Yes, as an affirmative.
Okay, without objection. Any discussion on items two through four? I'm assuming Vice President Shugtai and Councilmember Palmasano are in for queue for item one? Okay. Seeing no one in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
On the Public Health and Safety Committee report items two through four, Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and those items are adopted. Next, we will take up item number one, and I will call on Vice President Shugtai.
Thank you, Mr. President. On item number one, I would like to make a motion to continue this item by one cycle and would ask for a second on that motion. I'm happy to provide some context as well.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. President, as I had a chance to confer with the author of this ordinance, Councilmember Palmasano, around making this motion, wanted to just share with colleagues, and I know there are a number of people who are following this work along on the Workplace Advisory Committee as well, and within the administration as well. So just wanted to offer that there are a few potential revisions or amendments to this amendment or to this ordinance that are under review right now by the city attorney's office, and we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to provide a fulsome legal review for amendments that I'm considering bringing forward. And so, for that reason, would ask the body to consider this delay by one cycle. Thank you.
Vice President Shugtai has moved to hold this for one cycle. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none.
Mr. Chair, I've been in, oh, I guess I got knocked out of the queue, but I've been in queue.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Council Vice President Shugtai did advise me yesterday that she plans to bring amendments to the Sick and Safe Time Ordinance. The city attorneys just received this language and will need some time to review. So I did reluctantly agree to move to delay this item for one cycle in order to allow for that review and to give Council Vice President Shugtai and myself a chance to discuss it. However, I again want to state that my preference is to move this ordinance forward as is with the proposed changes, as they are good clarifying changes that will make it easier for our residents, our businesses, and our staff to interpret and enforce it. So I do respect this interest in delaying, but I ask that we will keep major changes and additions separate, as they will take a lot of work to bring forward, and I don't want to hold up this large body of work that can benefit our residents now. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on continuing item one.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the full PHS report is adopted. The next order of business is notice of ordinance introductions. We have five notices today, four of which are not on our published agenda but are before us in printed form. I will read all four notices for the record. First, Councilmember Osman gives notice of intent to introduce the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the License and Business Regulations Code, adding a new chapter 325 entitled Cannabis Events to establish a process to provide local approval for and to regulate and permit events held by state-licensed cannabis event organizers. Second, I'm giving notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the subject matter of an ordinance amending the Administration Code to amend provisions related to city property and resources and use of official time. Third and fourth are from Councilmember Chavez, who gives notice of intent to introduce two ordinances amending the Building and Heritage Preservation Codes, adding and amending provisions related to requirements associated with the demolition and wrecking of structures. Finally, Councilmember Osman and Wonsley give notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the Housing Maintenance Code, amending provisions related to rental dwelling licenses. Are there any questions on these licenses or on these notices? Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. I would just like to ask the author of the Cannabis Event Permitting Ordinance if it is all right if I'm added as an author?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Hopefully, the clerks can get that documented. All right, those notices are hereby given, and no further action is required at this time. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. Pursuant to notice, Councilmember Cashman moves to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the Streets and Sidewalks Code